I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Auburn School Committee. This meeting is being recorded. I would ask if there's anyone else recording the meeting? Seeing none, if you'd please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, the republic of the states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We do have some citizens' comments this evening. Who do we have this evening? Dr. Hanfield?
We have Mr. John Generelli. He's, I believe, under Brody Camuso on the screen. I don't... He has to turn... Mr. Camuso... Oh, excuse me. Mr. Generelli, are you there?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Could you possibly turn your camera on?
Yeah.
And your microphone?
Hold on. It might be a tech issue on our side, sorry.
Who's that?
You can hear him? Okay. Mr. Camuso? Oh, excuse me. Mr. Generelli?
Yes. Yeah. Brody.
I'm here on the other side.
Go ahead.
Mr. Desto, could you say something to us?
Good evening, committee.
Okay. All right. Good. So you're there.
Okay. Mr. Generelli, can we try you again?
Yes. Can you hear me now?
There you are. Thank you.
Here we go.
Thank you.
Okay.
We see you loud and clear. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for your patience. We apologize.
Sure.
You have the floor, Mr. Generelli.
Yes. Well, I just wanted to attend tonight's meeting. Thank you for having me. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about Kason and Foster. I know they've been around for a while for the school committee and for the school district. But Mr. Desto did reach out to me, and we had a nice conversation. And I just wanted to see if there was any chance maybe doing a survey as to whether some people are disappointed. I know I kind of am. I know they used to be with Life Touch, which was probably about five years ago. I thought they were great, but, you know, I did get some feedback on a Facebook page. And I know some people were suggesting that they took too long to deliver their product. But, you know, Mr. Desto did reach out to me, and I think we'll get together on maybe doing a survey to see, you know, get some feedback as to what the majority of people think about Kason and Foster, that a lot of disappointment is retakes, even the retakes are not as great. And...
We will certainly take that commentary into consideration. I don't know that we can promise a survey. I think we'll certainly look into it. And if there are any other complaints, then we'll look a little bit deeper. But I haven't heard much up until this point. This is the first I'm hearing. So just give us an opportunity, if you would, to have a conversation with the superintendent, who obviously will be having a conversation with Mr. Desto personally. And I'm only one person. I haven't had any issues with Kason and Foster over the past, I don't know, 10 years that we've been involved. But that's not to say that you didn't have a less than pleasurable experience with them. Not saying that at all, and I'm sure there are other people. I'm just not... I'd rather have a conversation with the superintendent and see what kind of feedback we've gotten thus far, and then see how we would like to proceed from there. And I'm just going to open up to the rest of my committee and see if there are any comments on their behalf. If anyone has a concern with that.
When I was in the teaching in the district, we had Kason Foster at times, and then we had some other photographers. So who hires the photographers?
Yeah. So through the chair, historically, it's been Life Touch, Kason Foster.
Okay, yeah.
And it really becomes, you know, it's kind of at the building level. Typically, there are contracts that are entered into in duration, you know, three years or so. You know, and there are various reasons why. You know, schools, you know, will go with different photographers and what have you. Life Touch was in the elementary schools, you know, up until a few years ago. And then there was a decision made to go with Kason Foster. And I suspect, you know, probably along some of the same lines as Mr. Generelli's concerns as he's speaking tonight, some of those concerns, I'm sure, were part of the reason why people left Life Touch to go to Kason Foster. But I think what we would need to do at this point, my recommendation would be we would research, you know, what contracts are out there, you know, in the existing buildings. And, you know, based on that, you know, when the time comes, you know, to take a survey, you know, of what the satisfaction is on school photos for folks, and go from there. I mean, I think obviously having data is good. So that's kind of where I am. I mean, I'm a little... I apologize. I'm a little unprepared for this tonight. I wasn't... I was just made aware of it this morning, and just didn't have a chance with everything else going on to really delve too deeply into it. But, you know, it's certainly something we can do, and happy to look into that and report back to the committee on what we have in buildings and, you know, where we could possibly go from here.
That sounds great. Yeah. Mr. Generelli, we certainly want every student and every parent's experience to be a good one. As I said, you know, mine have been so far. I feel bad that that hasn't been the case for you, but we certainly strive to have the best services for our families, whether it's through photography or anything else, any other contracts, or any other vendors that we work with. We certainly look to have the best. So, yeah, we will definitely look into it again. Like Mr. Hanfield said, kind of new to him, even more new to us. I know that we spoke through, or corresponded through email briefly last week, but didn't really know what it was going to be about. So, yeah, just give us an opportunity to address this, and we'll see where it goes.
Yeah. I mean, you know, I didn't realize the, you know, every building or every school building has its options. I thought it was pretty much district-wide, but Mr. Desto made me aware of that. Like I said, from here.
Okay. Well, we appreciate your comments. You're welcome to stick around and listen. I'm just going to see if there are any other comments from the committee.
I have one more.
Go ahead.
The only other thing I remember is we questioned why we went from one photographer to another. The teachers did.
Sure.
And I don't remember which way it went.
Yeah.
And we were told that the one we ended up going with had offered middle school planners to all the kids in the building if we chose him. So evidently, there was some benefit to the school building to take it.
Sure.
But I don't know anything more about it.
It's not unreasonable. I mean, you know, I've been in the district. This is my 16th year, and I can tell you that every single year, be it yearbooks, be it school photos, diplomas, caps and gowns, you know, these are these things that vendors are constantly seeking to get your business.
Okay.
And so, yeah, I mean, it's, you know, to your point, Mrs. Holloway, I concur with you. I mean, oftentimes, there's, you know, a question about the existing services you're getting. And then, you know, if there's, you know, some other things put in there for the benefit of kids, you know, sometimes that can be the difference. But, you know, like I said, I'm not opposed at all to reviewing the issue and getting back to you with where we are now with contracts, with vendors around this issue, and then, you know, how we might propose to move forward, to seek the data that Mr. Generelli is looking for, and, you know, if there's an opportunity there to, you know, to share that data, whatever that may be, with the existing vendor. In this case, it's Kason Foster. And go from there.
That sounds reasonable to me. Any other comments? Mr. Generelli, we thank you for joining us tonight. Never hesitate to reach out to us if you have any questions or concerns. We're... That's what we have for...
Okay. Well, thank you so much. I'm probably going to hang around and listen in.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Dr. Exciting.
Don't fall asleep. All right. So we now move on to special recognitions. Dr. Hanfield?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, yes, under special recognitions, we do have one this evening. Sarah Lemovitz, the nurse at the Auburn Integrated Preschool, was recently awarded two grants from the Auburn Cultural Council. The first, Read Across Auburn, which has been awarded many times at our preschool, will supply three months' worth of books for all students, remote and in-person. One new book a month will be sent home so that children can increase their in-home libraries and explore new age-appropriate titles. The Upstander Project is a new grant that was inspired by the social justice initiative starting at the beginning of the school year. So here's a grant summary. The purpose of this project is to encourage and promote lessons of kindness, equality, and justice among our littlest scholars in the town of Auburn. During the month of February, our students received an introduction to civil rights, as well as lessons of caring, compassion, and kindness. The goal is to communicate the need and importance of standing up for each other by introducing an unfamiliar term to them, "upstander", which is defined as a person who speaks or acts in support of an individual or cause, particularly someone who intervenes on behalf of a person being attacked or bullied, and rewarding our students when those behaviors are displayed. In teaching our littlest Auburn citizens to be kind, caring individuals, we promote a generation of acceptance and in turn allow for more students to have confidence in their educational experience, as well as within their own identities. So we applaud Mrs. Lemovitz for seeking this grant and obtaining these books for students and to start having these age-appropriate conversations around bullying and, you know, appropriate behavior and things of that nature.
Excellent. Any comments from the committee?
I think that's great. I know, I think they did the book through the chair. I think they did the preschool books last year. My son got one, a few, actually. I think he was very excited.
No, thanks. I'm always impressed when our staff go above and beyond and work on writing grants, and always looking out for the best interests of our students and our children, including our children. So that's much appreciated. Thank you. Moving on.
Yes, thank you. So tonight, we have with us Mr. Desto. And this year's Project 351 Ambassador from the Auburn Middle School. I think they're both... There they are. Good. This year's selection from Auburn Middle School to be the Auburn community's ambassador for the Project 351 is eighth grader Carly Beemenderfer. Carly is the daughter of Adam and Kathy Jo Beemenderfer of Auburn. She is and has been an outstanding student throughout her years in the Auburn public schools. She is currently, once again, a Honored Student while taking our most challenging classes, including Algebra, Accelerated English, and high school-level virtual high school Spanish classes. Carly is an officer in the National Junior Honor Society and takes the lead on many activities and initiatives that enhance our school and our community. To name a sampling of her outstanding service, Carly has had a leadership role in a variety of fundraisers and food drives for Auburn Youth and Family Services, as well as for collecting clothing for Andy's attic. Additionally, she helps organize and run dances and other activities at Auburn Middle School, and regularly spreads kindness and positive vibes through the school. Carly is also an accomplished Irish step dancer who has performed across New England and in Ireland. We are extremely proud to have Carly represent the Auburn school community tonight. And welcome, Carly. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Desto is somewhere. He was, anyway.
We saw him.
Yeah, we did see him. Let's see if he's there on the screen.
Can you hear me?
Oh, there he is. There he is. Hi. Nice to see you, Mr. Desto.
I know I'm not that tall, but geez, on Zoom, we're all the same.
We'll give the floor to you to talk a little bit more about Carly, and then I'm sure the committee has some comments.
Yeah. I mean, Dr. Hanfield, thank you very much. And school committee, we, you know, we appreciate the opportunity to recognize Carly. Who, by the way, Mr. and Mrs. Beemenderfer, congratulations to you, too. And I want to say that I, in my judgment, you're three for three, because I love Jamie and AJ, too. Jamie and AJ, Carly's brother and sister, are in seventh grade, and then Carly, of course, is in eighth. So we have the joy of having all three. And, you know, Dr. Hanfield, you mentioned some of the more on-paper things, statistics, if you will, that make Carly special. But really, if you come around our school every day, it's just kind of like who she is. It's more of an intangible thing that separated her. There were like, I don't know, the teachers probably give me like a list of 10 or 15 students, and we kind of narrow it down from there. And at the end of the day, it really came down to, this is about representing not just Auburn Middle School, but the community of Auburn throughout the state. The three, as you all know, the 351 stands for the number of communities across the state that get to send an ambassador. So she's our ambassador, and I believe that she's got some really special, probably doesn't even realize it, but some very special leadership qualities that are going to serve her well throughout time. And she's going to be a great, confident, and impressive ambassador for Auburn for the next year, and will be one in a long line of great choices that we've made as a team over the years, recent three years I've been there, and I'm sure going back even further than that. So we're very proud of Carly. I, you know, I really enjoy speaking to her during the course of the days. She's an interesting person who has great breadth of knowledge for a person her age. There's so many more things I could say, but I'm going to deny every one of them tomorrow. We're really proud of you and appreciate the opportunity to speak about Carly a little bit.
Thank you so much.
But Carly, and you remember when you were in sixth grade and you went to Ireland, right? And I asked for a very simple thing. I asked you to get... I'm a fan of the Irish band Thin Lizzy, and there's a statue of Philip Lyne, our singer, for Thin Lizzy in Dublin, and you never got me that picture, so you still owe it to them.
We were looking for it. We really did go through Dublin, just looking for it. But next time, definitely.
Next time.
Thank you for that commentary, Mr. Desto. Again, welcome, Carly. The committee?
Casey, back to you.
I'm sure we're going to have some comments from the committee. Is there anything anyone would like to say to Carly?
Sure. I'll just start and say congratulations, and please come back and tell us all about your experience, every student that we've had.
Talk about AJ and Jamie now if you want. No, I won't embarrass the family any further.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that, Mr. Desto. You're so kind. And any other comments from the committee?
I was just going to say, please come back and tell us about your experience. We love hearing about this really special day that you're going to get to attend. And, you know, it's just a feel-good kind of day, and we think, you know, we're glad that another excellent candidate was selected.
Agreed.
Can she hear me? I know.
Carly, can you hear us?
Are they on?
No.
The ACTV one is muted, isn't it, honey?
Oh, wait.
Carly and Mr. Generelli, they're the only ones I can see. Can you guys see the school committee?
Can we hear you?
You can't hear me.
I can see the board with the clock behind it.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I have, too.
Can you hear us, Mr. Desto?
Any of the grants. So I don't know what's happening. I'm trying to doubt Casey and Beth, but we seem to be in some more technical difficulties.
Maybe this is a good time to show how my school photo came out really good this year. Can you see that?
Just like you.
Tough to make me look good, Mr. Generelli.
Oh, there we go. We're on. Can you hear us now?
We can hear you, yes. I can hear you.
Okay. Done. You want to repeat?
Take three. I just wanted to invite you back to come speak about your day after you get to have this experience. We love to hear about all the different students from around the state that you get to meet. And, you know, there's no doubt, no mind that we're the great candidate to represent Auburn community. So have fun and good luck.
Thank you.
Carly, I just want to say I'm so proud of you. I've watched you grow up. I've met you when you were in preschool. So this doesn't surprise me at all. You have the perfect work ethic, and you're very spirited. And I think you're going to be an amazing representative. So I can't wait to see what happens and how well you do. And please definitely come back and share with us.
Thank you so much.
Carly, you can leave your microphone on.
Okay.
That's fine. I know you're used to churning it off for school, but... Any other comments?
I would just like to say if I could see you step dancing sometime, I'd love that.
Through the chair, it's amazing that, you know, what an honor to have this done in such an interesting year as this year, of being able to still accomplish all of this. I'm sure there are great things in your future, and please come back and tell us about it.
Four. Thank you.
I would just echo the sentiments of the rest of the committee. I've known Carly for quite a few years now, and I was always struck by her level of maturity, even at a very young age, and having conversations with her. So I knew good things were to come, and here we are this many years later, and she'll be representing not only the schools, but the entire district. And so we look forward to hearing about your experience. We're very confident that you're going to represent all of Auburn in a very positive way. So we wish you the best, and certainly keep us posted.
Thank you.
As far as the step dancing, I'm not sure if that's something that we can arrange for a school committee meeting.
Well, maybe three minutes.
There you go. Yeah, we could have a recess, I guess.
Yeah.
Or maybe we could just do a personal show for Mrs. Holloway. We'll make sure that she tips you well.
Oh, absolutely.
But no, we really look forward to hearing about your experience. Is there anything that you wanted to share with us, Carly?
Um, no. I think it's been a great experience so far for me. I was really honored to be chosen. And then we've had our first people meeting for Project 351. And I met my group last week with, I think, some sort of seven or eight kids. And we kind of, I'm sorry, have a little chat. We're texting every day. It's been great to sort of start to become friends with these people from all over the group and just see what it's like to go to meetings and, yeah. So far, we've met a lot of people who have been great to meet. Yeah. Probably some.
That's great. I'm sure you're going to continue to meet some quality individuals. So best of luck. Have a wonderful experience, and give us all the details.
Of course.
Nice seeing you. Take care.
Thank you.
Bye. Thank you.
Bye.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Desto. Nice picture. And now, do we have our student representatives? Aaron and Jasmine?
Jasmine's up there. Hi, Jasmine.
Oh, there she is.
Hello. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Everyone is healthy and well. So I guess I'll just start with my report. So to begin, I'm happy to report that Derek spent a lot of his time regarding our return to school on April 5. I know everyone is eager to get back in and try to get back to our typical schedule as best as possible, especially under the circumstances at the time. So I know everyone is super excited for that, and I'm interested to see how everything goes. And the next thing that I wanted to bring up is that we have a freshman at the high school. Her name is Anna Alicia Melanazzo. I discovered recently that I guess she is working with Mr. DeLongchamp to put together an American Sign Language class or club at the high school. I'm not sure the minute details of it, if it's going to be starting this year or next year. But I know that she is really trying to get that off the ground. And right now, I think she had, she said that she has about eight students who are interested in doing so. So she's been doing a lot of outreach, trying to see who would be interested in doing that. And I think that's really impressive, because I just think that the more inclusive we can be, I think that shows a lot about the type of community that we have. So that is really great of Anna, especially because she's just a freshman. And I know that she has had quite the year, as we all have, but especially being a freshman, your first year of high school, and it is absolutely wild, and mostly at home. But that is really great of her, and it just shows a lot about her character. She's a fellow teammate of mine on the cross-country team, and she is one of the most outgoing people. She has such a great spirit, and she always brings a smile. And it's just really great to see her, you know, stepping out of her comfort zone and trying to put this together, so. I didn't have much more than that for tonight, but I also have some reports on behalf of Aaron, who unfortunately isn't able to join us tonight. So this is Aaron's report that he sent to me. He said that the Model UN had a great conference last Saturday, which included actual representatives from the United Nations. So that is pretty exciting. And then he said that he is happy to report that the band will be happening again in person upon our arrival to school full-time. So that is also exciting. He didn't have anything else, nor did I. So, yeah, that's it for right now.
Thank you. Well, great report, as always, and filling in for Aaron. I'm sure that he's going to owe you something for this. Couple of weeks now.
Yeah, I told him if he wanted me to read his report, he had to sign an IOU.
Good for you.
TJ Maxx gift certificates.
That's a great idea.
Jasmine, if I could... I'm sorry. Jasmine, if I could ask you real quick. So the American Sign Language piece is terrific. Is, do you know, is Anna Alicia helping? Does she know sign language, or is this just something she's looking to get off the ground?
I am not 100% sure.
Okay.
But I know Anna, and knowing her, I wouldn't be surprised if she does. But I'm also, I'm not sure if maybe she's just eager to learn herself and interested. But I received an email from her today just saying that she was interested in getting it off the ground, and if anyone was interested, to please respond and let her know. So I just thought that that was great, and that I would bring it up today. And she said that she was just working with Mr. DeLongchamp to work on that. So if she knows it, I'm not sure, but...
Yeah. I was just curious.
She doesn't use...
No, thank you. I think it's, no, it's absolutely outstanding. It's outstanding. And this is something that's come up in previous years. The trick has always been to find somebody that would be able to do it, you know, or somebody who was versed in it. So, but no, I think it's excellent. So I was just curious. But I'll follow up with Mr. DeLongchamp. So thank you.
Of course.
Any other comments for Jasmine?
I agree. It sounds like a great program or a great club.
Great opportunity for our students, yes.
Excellent opportunity.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Now, Jasmine, is this something that you'll be helping out with or joining?
Um, I do. I am very interested. In years prior, I was extremely passionate about sign language. I didn't know everything, but I knew a lot of signs. So I was just really interested in it, and I don't know. That's why she reached out to me. I know that she tends to look up to me as kind of like a mentor with a lot of things, so I'm sure that's why she included me in the email. But I'm not sure, because right now I do have a lot on my plate with academics and spring sports coming up. But if it is something that I can fit in and make sure that I can put aside enough time to really put my effort into it, then most definitely that's something that I'd be interested in.
That's excellent. Well, as long as you're there to support her, I think that'll be enough. And I don't think she could ask for a better mentor. And I also agree that it's a great program. I just can't imagine if we could continue the program to a point where there are at least a few students in the building at all times who are able to do sign language, how great that would make, you know, an incoming eighth grader feel as a new student in the building, to know that there are at least a few people there who they could converse with and just, you know...
Exactly.
As you said, it's difficult enough freshman year, and, you know, all of the stress that goes into that, the discomfort, and being in a new situation. And I just think that, you know, if there are a few people to welcome students like that, I think that's fantastic.
Of course. Especially I know with our Rockets to Rockets program, which is students helping out other students, but specifically the students that have either learning disabilities or just some disadvantages, other, you know, that are aside from typical students at school. And they sit down and help them and spend time with them and really just try to be a great peer at school. And I know that a lot of them, you know, rely on sign language for communication every day. So I think... So I think that if more students were able to do that, more, a greater connection that they could have. And I also know students that are hearing impaired. So having something like this that could just be more inclusive would be incredible.
I agree. And you and your classmates continue to make us proud. Keep it up.
Thank you so much.
Any other comments for Jasmine?
Great job as always Jasmine, thank you.
Thank you.
Jasmine, as a reward, we're gonna allow you to stick around for the whole, whole meeting if that's.
Make sure to give that back to you.
I appreciate that so much, but I do have homework that I have to start on.
No excuses necessary.
Thank you. You have a nice evening and we'll see you next time.
Thank you. Go as well.
Take care. She's something.
Yeah.
I would now entertain a motion to accept the minutes of 2:24:21.
I'll make that motion that we accept the minutes for 2:24:21.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. And we now move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Hanfield?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Starting off tonight, I would like to bring to your attention that I was recently notified that our Director of Technology, Eric Bouvier's daughter Lauren, who works at Old Navy and Milbury, has donated three additional boxes of masks to the district. It's my recommendation that you accept this donation with gratitude. And we have sent a thank you note already.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to accept with gratitude the donation of masks from Old Navy?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Thank you.
Yes.
And we now move on to unfinished business.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. COVID update, as you've seen in my, my messages to the community, we continue to see our COVID numbers decrease markedly across the district, which is a good thing. It's also obviously one of the major factors in the return to school that Jasmine spoke of in April 5. Just like to remind people, because we still get, do get questions via email about numbers and close contacts, that we do have an interactive COVID count chart, you know, up on our school district website. And so people, you know, are really encouraged to check that information out. It's really cool to kind of see from, you know, kind of chart it since we started in September. So, so that's there. And of course, we're always happy to answer questions that come in via email as well. We will continue to keep, you know, our safety requirements in place for the foreseeable future. Masks, hand washing, social distancing, you know, trying to avoid large crowds, all of those things, you know, will still be in place for the foreseeable future. And when Dr. Chamberlain talks a little bit later about some things going on with vaccinations, she'll elaborate more on some of these things that we're doing. But, but trending in the right direction and we're, we're pleased to see that.
Excellent. Moving on.
Yep. And so moving on to April 5, we continue to be on track for our April 5th return for all of our students. We are holding transition days March 30th and April 1st. That was something that we had discussed a couple of weeks ago as being a concern, is making sure that we have those, those, those transition days for kids, but also for faculty. The way that we have positioned those days, March 30th is a Tuesday. So we would have that following Wednesday to make some adjustments before we'd receive kids on Thursday, April 1st. And then we'd have that Friday to make adjustments in preparation for receiving them all back on April 5. We're still working out before and after-school care possibilities. We anticipate, and I say anticipate, we will have openings, but they'll be limited to begin. But we will be offering those. We're right now in the middle of putting together staffing. We do have interested staff at the buildings for those, so that's good. And we're continuing to evaluate what that Wednesday will look like, whether it's a half or a full day. And I'll likely have information to share with the community on Friday with respect to that. You do have in your packets, this came as a late entry. The Commissioner handed out his 16-page guidance with respect to return to school. And it addresses the anticipated return dates that he wants all schools back by. As you can see, we're gonna be way ahead of that in terms of returning all of our children to school. We feel it's the right thing to do. And within the 16 pages here, it's not anything that was really surprising. It's more of a reinforcement of things that were handed out to us and discussed at nauseam, if you will, over the summertime. So now we're just in the process of putting together a plan to get, to get our kids back in April 5. But we, we're, we're making great progress. We're excited. As you heard from Jasmine, the kids are extremely excited. And we'll continue to keep you apprised as we, as we move along.
Excellent.
Through the chair, I actually just have one question. And actually it's to do with what Jasmine noted, that the band is starting back up?
Yes.
Is that just the high school or are we doing it all the way down to the grade?
Should be all the way down. Jasmine did know it at the high school, but it should be all the way down in, in speaking. And I'm gonna actually make a note to myself right now that you brought that up because Mrs. Bailey, our Director of, our co-director of Fine Arts, sent us an email. I don't recall if it was at a previous meeting that I had discussed this with you, but, you know, they actually make bell covers and other protective equipment so that the kids can participate with their instruments. We also have additional guidance that's come out from the state relative to instrument playing and singing. So yeah, we're looking to, to bring them back and have that start up as soon as we can, provided we have the protective equipment in, in place and we have the safety protocols, you know, to follow. But yes, yes. So we're looking to bring it back as far as, you know, across all grades.
That's great. What, now, what did you say happens with the instrument? They put a bubble around it or what is?
No.
The cover?
No, so for example, if you picture a saxophone, right, there's a, the bell end.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a cover you put over the bell to, to catch the droplets that would be expelled through the saxophone.
Okay, gotcha.
I don't have one for mine, but I mean, maybe I'll probably, I'll jump on the train and get one.
We're gonna get a concert?
Well, that was the plan this year until I was gonna play a little Jingle Bells. I can still. You won't see me this spring, but you will see me definitely next year in some of those concerts. But they make, they've made for all sizes, flutes, clarinets, trumpets, trombone, whatever it is. Sousaphones, whatever. So we're in the process of getting that protective equipment now. And it will, you know, that coupled with distancing appropriately should be able to get them back playing their instruments as a group. So yeah, so that's another, another part that we're working on as part of the return to school plan that we're excited about.
Great.
Great.
Well, the only way we're gonna entertain you playing the, is it the saxophone?
Yes, sir.
Is if you get a custom tailored fit marching band uniform.
You might have, you might have better luck getting me in the Rocket costume again before you give me one of those, but.
I'm gonna pass on that one.
She may have one. She may have one. We'll see. We'll see. But I'm not, I'm not adverse.
That's great. But no, it's just another, another little piece to the puzzle of getting our, our children back to some sense of normalcy. So it's pretty exciting. And I can tell you, in personal experience, my son cannot wait to get away from that countertop, that breakfast bar in the kitchen where he does all his work and looks at that iPad all day. He just, he's gonna be so excited to get back full-time.
Absolutely.
I think across the board, across the state, it's really, it's a great turn of events. It's a, it's a reason to celebrate, really is.
I do have one question. In reading this lovely report before it came.
Yes.
He talked constantly about children being so many feet apart in their desks. But a lot of our classes use tables.
Right.
Are we gonna have to go out and buy desks?
Yeah, so that's a great question. We actually, so it, so the answer is half and half. At the kindergarten levels, where we use a lot of tables, we've, we've gone ahead and purchased desks for those classrooms. The other, the other part of the answer is for the additional desks that we need, we contacted the Diocese of Worcester, you know, with the merging of St. Peter's and Holy Name. They actually have desks in storage that they're not using. So Mr. Desto has a, has a contact, being a Holy Name alum. And he was, he made some, some phone calls. And so we're actually gonna be able to get some desks from them for a very nominal fee to help us out.
Wonderful.
Because they're just sitting in storage over there. So, so yeah, so we're, we're doing that.
Oh, okay. Because that could cost a bundle if we had to go out and buy all new furniture.
Yeah, I mean, a desk, you know, for, you know, kindergarten, I mean, they're adjustable. So I mean, I guess you could raise them, but I mean, primarily, I mean, a K5 desk versus what you'd see in 612, they're not the same. They're roughly $119 apiece. So we were able to purchase, you know, what we needed for the, for the elementary schools, but for the older kids, you know, we're able to get tablets and some other, other types of desks, which, you know, it'll be for a very nominal price if anything. Because like I said, they're just sitting there taking up space.
Great.
That's excellent.
Good thinking before someone else got them.
Saran, did you have something?
Yeah, I just had a question about what the transition days look like. Are those full day, all kids in?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
Yep. So it's gonna be two days of, yeah, test running an entire school day, lunch, buses, everything. So that we will get two, two opportunities at it, which we feel is plenty. And we can make those adjustments so that when it comes to be, you know, April 5, we'll, we'll have everything hopefully ironed out. We're still looking at traffic patterns. We understand that, you know, our bus ridership hasn't really increased a ton through the survey that we sent out to families. So we anticipate that there'll be some traffic issues at buildings. Where Cecilia and Joseph and I, Dr. Chamberlain, talking about that in a morning meeting today, we're gonna work with the police department to get some details at each of the buildings to help with traffic, at least for the first two weeks, because then we run into the April vacation week. And then we'll assess logistically if we need to continue that, you know, having a police presence there with the increased amount of traffic flow. We'll see if that needs to happen through April. But we're already anticipating those types of things too, so that we can get our kids in and out, you know, expediently, but also not cause undue aggravation to the, you know, the residents who are trying to get to work or appointments and other things.
Through the chair, any thought of like a staggered pickup, drop-off at some of the schools, the younger schools that are, or actually I hear the middle school can be a little crazy at pickup as well?
Yeah, so, so those things are definitely on the table, I think. Yeah, I mean, those are things that we've definitely thought about and we'll finalize that, you know, in the next couple of weeks. The nice part about us making this decision to go back April 5, two weeks ago, is that we're two weeks ahead in most places. So the most important things for us would identify figuring out lunch and figuring out the spacing pieces. And we're in the process of doing that now. And so now it's the logistics, like, you know, traffic and pickup and drop-off and AM, you know, preschool and, excuse me, AM, you know, before school care and then after school care. So we're kind of into those weeds right now. But, but yeah, I mean, that's, that's definitely on the table for discussion.
And then one other question. So for kids who are sick or whatnot, are we planning on streaming them into their regular classroom? Or are they gonna have to take an absence for those?
Yeah, so the Commissioner, the Commissioner's guidance is very to the point. I believe it's, I don't know if it's, I forget what page it's on in there. But unless you're at home due to COVID or you're quarantining because of COVID, those hours wouldn't count towards student, student, student learning time. So unfortunately it goes back to old school, which would be get their work online. You know, if there's a prolonged absence for something else that happens, you know, we'll, we'll deal with that case by case. But what he was trying to get away from, and we wholeheartedly agree, because this has been somewhat of an issue in the district, is he's been trying to get away from people sitting on Miami Beach, remoting in, into classrooms. You know, he, he wants a return, you know, as a traditional school environment, you know, as, as it should be. So outside of COVID precautions or quarantining or COVID illness, yeah, that's gonna be off the table.
Okay. Through the chair, I just had one other clarification, but I think, I think this is covered. The one thing I didn't see here though, I may have missed it with if, hopefully we won't have to do this, but if we need to shut down an entire school for however long.
We're gonna need to get their permission.
Okay. Okay, that, because it wasn't clear if that was waiver, like for, for a short amount of time or if it all falls.
Yeah, no, that's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna be consultation with Desi. And they're gonna, well, based on a conversation that we were on today with the Commissioner, seemingly Desi is going to have to come in and give their stamp of approval on anything like that.
Okay.
But we'll just have to wait and see what happens, how that goes. You know, it's like anything else, right? This isn't a black and white situation and, and, you know, as much as we're happy and we're celebrating a return to school, there's still a lot of gray areas that just haven't been kind of, I shouldn't say thought about, but just, you know, you could go on and on and on and on about all the what-ifs and whatabouts. So hopefully that's not gonna be us, but if it is, you know, we'll, we'll cross that, you know, we'll cross that as necessary. Sure.
Okay. Moving on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So before you tonight is a draft of the 2021-2022 school year calendar. You can see here that, you know, as I said in my, in our meeting last, that it maintains all of our traditional vacations, April, February, holiday break. What you'll notice in here too is the five professional development days that we're obligated to by law under 185-day calendar. What we're, what we're on the fence with right now is whether or not we're gonna continue having half-day releases for faculty. We're discussing right now and assessing the, I guess, the utility of those as it relates to, to things that we would need to be doing throughout the school year and whether or not a half-day, half-days periodically are necessary. So that conversation is still ongoing. So that's why you'll see the little yellow marker that says curriculum in service, but you won't see any yellow on there, because we're not sure that we're gonna continue it. And then the other addition is under Governor Baker's Juneteenth declaration that June 19th is, is Juneteenth and it will be observed in the state of Massachusetts on June 19th each year. This year, this coming school year, it would fall on the 19th, so it then gets celebrated on the next day that we're in business. So that's what the 20th is. So some people may have some questions about that, but that's what that's for. But it's there as a draft. Again, it's, it's, it looks a little bit different too, that we changed the format a little bit. We'll obviously clean up, you know, some things here and, but give it to you as a draft to peruse and we'll bring you a final recommendation at our next meeting on the 24th.
Sounds good. Any comments?
Yeah, through the chair, just a comment about the half-days. From what I've heard, it's a lot easier for parents to eliminate the half-days.
I would agree.
Yeah.
This is a working mom.
That's the word on the street. But I mean, obviously you guys will do what you need to do and just throwing that out there.
Any other comments? Okay. Moving on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just again, just a quick FY22 budget update. We continue to refine the FY22 budget. As mentioned a couple of weeks ago, the Governor's House One budget is still working its way through the House and Senate Ways and Means Committee. Good news, the Board of Selectmen did endorse our budget at their most recent meeting and sent it forward to Finance Committee. So I will be presenting with Cecilia and Dr. Chamberlain to the Finance Committee our budget on March 17, which is next Wednesday. And we'll review the budget one more time coming out of that committee meeting. And then we'll look to adopt the formal number on the 24th. And then we'll hold our public hearing on the 14th of April. And right now town meeting is set for May 4. But we seem to be going at a pretty good clip in terms of getting a budget, you know, on town meeting floor that's supported by all. And so obviously we'll continue to keep you apprised of, you know, where that goes.
Any comments, questions? Okay. Same now, we'll move on to new business.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just real quick, I wanted to just mention, there's been a lot of conversation about Mary D. Stone and Julia Bancroft. And I had the pleasure of virtually joining the Julia Bancroft groundbreaking on March 2nd. And as you, you may be aware, but some folks that maybe in the community aren't aware, Julia Bancroft and Mary D. Stone have been converted into 100 units of affordable, high-quality senior housing and have been added for our citizens primarily. It creates a new tax revenue stream for the town of Auburn. And it also keeps Mary D. Stone and Julia Bancroft historically, you know, in the, in the minds of the town. So just wanted to mention that. And it was a wonderful celebration, albeit virtually. But from Congressman of government to Lieutenant Governor Polito, to Town Manager Jacobson and other dignitaries, it was, it was a great event, a great event. And so I included a little, a little photo there. You can see of kind of what the proposal looks like for the, I believe it's 60 units at Julia Bancroft and there are 40 at Mary D. Stone. it's sixty units at Julia Bancroft and there are forty at Mary D. Stone. Um, so just wanna to thank all involved for that because it will, um, it's definitely gonna be an add to our town, um, on both sides.
That's great. It's nice to see something being done with those historic buildings. I can't envision it looking like that though.
Yeah. Well, it, yeah. Well, Mary D. Stone, I mean, you, you, you're just glad to see it take shape.
Yeah.
Julia Bancroft, I just, I went, took a ride behind there the other day. And yeah, I mean, to, to look at, you know, what's there now and, you know, having been a student, having been a teacher, right?
Yeah.
Been there for many years. Um, yeah, to see what that's gonna be transformed into is, yeah.
Yeah, I can't imagine how they're gonna connect the two buildings. But, uh, Mary D. Stone's coming along beautifully. So.
Yeah, look, they're doing a great job.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Penrose does a great job. They're doing a great job. So.
Great.
Pleased to announce that.
Moving on.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Um, just, um, in speaking of the May fourth, uh, town meeting, um, we do have some, uh, some warrants, um, to be presented that, uh, that are prepared for you in the packet for you to review. Um, the warrant article is closing on Monday, March fifteenth at noon. And, um, we could have a motion if there's no discussion, uh, to approve those.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve the warrant articles for the annual town meeting on May fourth as submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Thank you for that report. And we now move on to teaching and learning. Dr. Chamberlain?
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you. Uh, so it's interesting how the timing of all of this April fifth worked out. We thankfully have two professional development days, uh, this month, which are going to be used really more for preparation for the upcoming reentry into school, um, which is really gonna serve us very well. So each of the schools are, uh, have created different teams to look at different areas that need attention around reentry. They'll be working on that, uh, this Friday and then again on March twenty-second, so that come the time that we're welcoming students back in, we're quite ready to do so. Um, upon this return, they're really going to focus, as we discussed the last time, on some social and emotional learning and discussions and things that need to take place upon the students' reentry to make sure that they're acclimated and feeling safe. I think as we discussed the last time, there's a good chance there's going to be some anxiety on the parts of students and staff upon this reentry and hoping that, um, some targeted lessons through our guidance team will help with that. I'm meeting with the guidance team on Friday to kind of talk through some of those things as well. Um, so a lot of good things happening. And as a result of our, uh, the survey that went out related to how many students are actually coming in and how many are still staying remote, the numbers before you this evening are already outdated since March fourth, when I worked on this. Um, but the updated, uh, total number, we'll have two thousand and sixty students returning to in-person learning and two hundred and seventy-eight who are staying remote. Um, the number of remote students back at kind of the height of things was four hundred and eighty-five students that were fully remote. So that's a pretty significant shift, um, to have, uh, you know, another couple hundred students join us back for in-person. So I think that speaks to Jasmine's enthusiasm about coming back. And it speaks to, uh, I think everybody's belief that kids are gonna do better when they're in school. So.
Absolutely.
Um, we do still have a few families that secretaries and principals are working with to determine what their next steps will be. We did have some families that had lots of questions and rightfully so, you know, so we've given them time to get those answered and determine that. But I think we're in, um, very good shape, uh, for that return. And some even better news that's not included in my report tonight, but last evening at about five fifteen, I had a frantic text from Darlene Coyle from the Board of Health, who has now just become my angel in waiting, quite frankly. So I immediately called her back. Um, she, behind the scenes, along with Eileen Alexander, has continued to work really feverishly to give our teachers more access to vaccines. So with, um, the governor's announcement that boards of health would not be directly getting vaccines any longer, they were allowed to kind of regionalize a bit, right? And some regions have been able to access, uh, vaccines. So they've been working with Harrington Hospital in Southbridge, along with a number of other towns. So late yesterday, they, they heard that Harrington was going to be receiving eight hundred vaccines. And they were going to dedicate them to school personnel. And so at about five, I, but after I got off the phone with her, I started frantically drawing up an email. She sent me a link. It was a link just for staff that I sent out to those who had pre-registered previously, cause we had done that back in January, which I didn't even believe it was that long ago. Um, and so many of our staff were able to very easily access appointments that will be taking place on Saturdays and Sundays over the next few weeks into early April. Um, so between, as of yesterday, I think I had fifty-eight staff who had told me that they had either received their first vaccine or had appointments. As of this afternoon, I have a hundred and ninety-one.
Wow.
Awesome.
So that's, you know, out of three hundred, I think I had three hundred and fifty-three that initially said they were interested in getting the vaccine. Um, I suspect there are still some that I maybe, they didn't tell me or they forgot. Um, but I think that's a really remarkable shift just in a day. And what they've also told us is, is that appointments are going to continue to be added. So that with this link, if they weren't fortunate enough to get an, uh, an appointment this round, they should just continue to use the link so that they, as more become available, others will open up. Uh, additionally, there was an announcement from the governor today that they're going to be offer, offering school personnel only vaccinations, uh, times at the seven largest vaccination sites across the state. Uh, more information is gonna come out about that, but I shared that information out. There's another link about that. So it's really clear that opportunities are escalating for folks to get the vaccine. People are taking advantage of it. Um, and I will tell you, last night, that was the best news I had had in a really long time. Yeah. Um, I was sending the email and literally I thought I was gonna start crying.
I was gonna say I would cry.
Cause I just felt like we finally gave people something, you know?
Yeah.
We've asked so much and they have continued to step up, thankfully. But it was just nice to be able to offer something. So I cannot, cannot express my thanks enough to Darlene and Eileen and all the other folks behind the scenes because they just have not given up, no matter what. Even when they were so frustrated over February vacation, they just haven't given up. So without them, it wouldn't have been possible. But, um, had, we had a lot of thankful emails today from a lot of people that were able to easily secure a, a vaccination. So that's my big spiel for tonight, but.
Excellent.
Really good news. So really good news.
Any comments for Dr. Chamberlain? I had a brief conversation with Darlene, um, as well, and, uh, she was so complimentary of, of what we do as a school district and, and what all of you, um, and leadership have been doing. And, and, uh, that's just the kind of individual she is. And, uh, so, you know, but I, I told her that we, we owe her a debt of gratitude, her and her whole department, and, and everyone on the town side who have really, you know, come together to, to help get us through this. And this is just another situation where, um, they've exhibited that, that, you know, the, the work that, that they've been putting into this is, you know, and we all, we, we all have different jobs to do here. And, and, you know, let's not hide the fact that you guys are doing wonderful things here. But can you imagine what, what Darlene has gone through and, and her staff, you know, over the past year?
Yeah. Yeah. That's, it's been twenty-four seven.
And for her to, you know, use the opportunity and the conversation that we had to be complimentary of everything that we're doing. It was, it, it was just, it was funny that, but knowing her for as many years as I have, um, you know, it's, I, I didn't expect anything less. But, you know, just wanna take that opportunity to, to thank them once again, you know, publicly. Uh, they're, they're doing wonderful things. And before long, we'll be back to normal. Well, before too long, I guess.
And again, along with that, they continue to be our consult for changes, you know, with building setups and chairs and spaces and all of that. So we go to them for a lot of things and it's really served us, I think, really well. So, um, yeah, but good news for tonight.
Excellent. Thank you for that.
Excellent. Thank you.
And now for another fan favorite. We move on to business and financial.
Thank you and good evening, everyone.
Welcome.
Glad to be here. Um, in, in your packet, um, I've noted that there's, we have a natural gas bid award. Uh, the Auburn Public School Department and the town of Auburn have joined with Webster Public Schools and Wes, Wes Boilston Public Schools in collaboration with Competitive Energy Services to procure a natural gas pricing for a period of twenty-four months, beginning in November of twenty twenty-one. Competitive Energy Services works with the French River Collaborative Membership to assist with procurement of both electricity and natural gas contracts with responsible and responsive vendors. Um, with myself and Mr. Fahy, Joe Fahy, on behalf of the school department, we're able to negotiate a contract price of five dollars and ninety-three cents per Decotherm for a twenty-four month period, when at present we are currently paying six dollars and twenty-five cents per Decotherm. So the new rate will provide the district a savings of three thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars, which is kind of a small amount according to our budget, but it, every bit, little bit helps. So we were excited about that. Uh, the new contract will also unite the town accounts with the school department, which we have done previously with our electricity accounts. So I think that was a win-win as well. Um, we're looking just for a, a vote of approval to enter into a natural gas contract with Sprague for, starting in November twenty-one, for the price for twenty-four months.
I would entertain that motion.
I make a motion to approve, oh, I make a motion to approve the school department entering into a natural gas contract with Sprague for their building, starting November twenty twenty-one for a twenty-month, twenty-four month term and a price of five ninety-three per Decotherm.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion on that?
You should've.
Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Elizabeth.
Thank you. And I've also enclosed a copy of the FY twenty twenty end of the year report audit. Um, there were a few minor findings, but they've all been corrected and amendments have been posted with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. However, in addition, the auditors had mentioned that there were issues pertaining specifically to the school's chart of accounts and the town's indirect cost agreement, which I've brought, brought forward to CFO Castnovitz. And the school department will continue to collaborate with the town on those. Um, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is looking to have, um, the chart of accounts be more specific and some numbers added to differentiate, differentiate things. So I will work with him on that for the town. And our indirect cost agreement with the town is, um, it was dated in two thousand and ten. So it's actually time for an update. So we will work together on that as well. Um, I provided in your packet, a year-to-date budget. Oh, well, any questions about that or any?
I was just gonna make a comment. When I read through it, it seemed like we were doing what we'd been told the last time we'd been told, and then they changed the process and we're.
Correct.
And now we have to.
Right.
Catch up.
Right.
But they're making it out, well, the way it was worded, it was like we did this wrong and we did that wrong. But it, that's not the case. It's, the rules have changed.
Right. Right. And they're constantly changing and we're constantly trying to keep up with things. And.
Yeah.
Next year's audit will be even more challenging with all the funds and pockets of money that we're receiving. So just to keep track of all of that, but we'll do our best.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I provided in your packet, a year-to-date budget report, as well as a, um, budget transfer list, which is all between the same series for your information. And I'd be happy to answer any questions in relation to that. If there are any.
Seeing none. Sorry.
Okay. All right. And then I've also included an updated revolving accounts, um, listing of all our school department revolving and special revenue accounts for your review. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer that. It's just good to keep updating it from time to time as they do change from throughout the year.
Seeing none.
Okay. And then finally, um, just a reminder that the application for next school year is busing for twenty-one, twenty-two, has been shared with families through the one call. We've also put a copy up on the website and hard copies will be sent home with students with their report cards at the end of the try. Um, if there's any questions, I know that parents with us coming back to school, there's been some questions about issues if they paid this year and those type of things. So I would ask anyone who has questions specifically with regard to busing to feel free to reach out to me directly. And, um, I know Elaine and I have been, Mrs. Otner and I have been fielding a lot of phone calls and questions from parents with regard to this, but we'd be happy to help them. So please reach out to me and I'd be happy to help you. So.
Thank you for that.
And that's my report. If there's any questions or anything? No? Okay. Thank you very much.
Seeing none. Thank you. Okay. Then we now move on to job description.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, um, quickly with, um, Mrs. Otner's retirement, we were reviewing her job description. Um, and the last time it had been updated was in two thousand eleven. So in reviewing this with her, um, she brought to my attention that there were three, uh, well, four, well, three, um, three red bulleted items that you'll see there, um, that were additions to her job description. Um, so, um, to make sure that this was approved, we needed to bring this before you tonight. District's Corey Administrator, um, District Point of Contact for the fingerprinting, uh, Administrator Support for Regular Education, Bus Transportation, Reporting to School Business Manager, and Responsible for Keeping the District Policy Manual Up to Date. So, um, prior to us posting and seeking her, um, replacement, we just wanted to bring this before you for review and approval.
I would entertain motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the updated job description for Administrative Assistant Superintendent as presented.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
One person really does all this?
Yes.
That's, that's amazing.
Yes. At different points of the year. Yes.
Yes.
And more. Lots more.
Yep.
Wow.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. I would now entertain a motion to adjourn if there's nothing else.
Mr. Chair, thank you.
Did you make that motion yet?
I can make the motion to adjourn.
Okay. I thought you did. I'm sorry.
No, I didn't.
Second.
And that's a second from Mrs. Kaufman. Any discussion on that adjournment?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.